Seven thirty-five. Call a regular city council meeting of December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen to order. We do have a forum, let's please stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approved the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and hereon placed all agenda items on the table for discussion with the removal under...
Nine eight.
Nine eight. What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak and second by Councilman Lowdrin to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, copy of the minutes for the special work session, November seventh, two thousand fifteen, and the regular meeting, December seventh, two thousand fifteen, are imposed. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Canopla, second by Alderman Hercock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills, approved checks numbered nine-three-one-eight-eight through nine-three-two-eight-five totaling three hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Mr. Gushak?
Page one.
How long does the property tax reimbursement development township go on?
Two years, so this is the second year and final.
Thank you.
Page two.
Do we have a squat right down way out of town?
Uh, yeah.
Say in town talk seems kind of high, but...
Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven with the totals, and I'll make a motion. Pay the bills for three hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Hampton to approve the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, proclamations, awards, clean water protection award. Governor Dean, accept.
Mr. President, this evening we've got George Munrat with the Department of Health to present the award.
Uh, Mr. President, if it'd be okay, I'd like to make a few brief comments.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for having me tonight, Mr. Mayor, and the distinguished members of the city council. It's a pleasure for me to come in and present this award. Many times I'm out meeting with cities, and it's usually about plans, how they're going to have to spend money to develop plans. Today, I am out here on a very happy occasion. You have a wellhead protection program that started out a few years ago, struggling, almost received a notice of violation from the Department of Health. Have a staff member, Dwayne Heinand, that dug in, fixed a lot of problems, kept very active on that plan, and made it one of the most proactive programs in the state of Minnesota. And in the process, Dwayne and Greg, with his help and his support, had actually done quite a few things for your city. And, most people don't know this, they've gotten fifty thousand dollars in grants from the Department of Health, which forty thousand of them didn't even have a match. They've been very successful in leveraging this money for projects like sealing wells around the courthouse, I mean, the city hall, excuse me. Spending some money looking for new wells and investigating other problems. So I think you have a very good staff here that's been very proactive. Dwayne's been great to work with, he's had a lot of support from Greg. But last, I'd like to say that staff like this don't succeed without the support of a really good city council. So on behalf of the Minnesota Department of Health, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, and the city council, for all the efforts your staff in the city of Little Falls has made. To that end, I helped put in an application for a source water protection award for the city of Little Falls last year. Dwayne helped me write it, actually, he wrote most of it. And you were one of four cities in the state of Minnesota that have been awarded this. As part of the process, you actually get an award from the governor of the state of Minnesota. We have a little bubble up, so he didn't, we didn't have the meeting for the person. But I would like to present this to Dwayne and Greg and the city council, if I have your permission, just come forward. Remember, this is for the city of Little Falls, representing all the good work the city has done. So again, thank you, city council, and Mr. Mayor, and your staff.
Give it to the staff.
Give it to the staff.
Thank you very much.
Greg. Dwayne. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So what's the wish of the council on accepting the donation?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak and second by Alderman Hercock to accept the award. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Like, thank Dwayne and Greg for all your hard work, keeping the place going and tipped up sheets and keeping everything up to snuff. Onto washer extractor grant, Minnesota Department of Public Safety, State Fire Marshal Division, Fire Department, accept. Anybody know anything on their grant?
Um, this could be applied for a grant to, um, purchase equipment to be able to wash, wash their turnout gear, to clean it up after they've been, um, on fires. They did receive the grant, we were, um, informed of that at the end of November. So the grant is for just over seven thousand six hundred dollars, and the local match on that is two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to accept the grant.
Second.
Got a motion by alderman Hercock, second by councilman Lowdrin, on accepting the washer extractor grant. Any discussion? Some question, is that going to come from the fire department funding the match, or is that just...
Fire equipment, and, um, I believe that the, um, Fire Relief Association is going to pay for, help pay for fire department as well.
Any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, I noticed, um, fire chief isn't here, but, and we're coming up on a year since we've taken our seats, and I'm continually impressed on how the fire chief is getting money from other sources.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, building, building department report, November two thousand fifteen received. Fire department report, November two thousand fifteen received. Heritage preservation commission minutes, December two thousand fifteen received. Housing redevelopment authority minutes, November two thousand fifteen received. Lake of Minnesota City Insurance Trust property casualty dividend calculations, received. Police department report, November two thousand fifteen received. Public Works Department report, November two thousand fifteen received. Wastewater treatment facility report, November two thousand fifteen received. Water treatment facility report, November two thousand fifteen received. What's the wish of the council on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Canopla to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings, you know, letting, uh, tablets, city council, business machines plus, approve. John?
Yes, um, as presented in the work session and discussed, um, staff is looking at implementing tablets, devices for all of the council members, and then having two additional ones for staffs to be able to utilize during the council meeting. Um, doing some research on the cost for printing the packets alone, uh, it looks like we spend about two hundred and fifty dollars every single council meeting to produce, uh, the paper documents of the packet. That's just the time, uh, staff spends utilizing the copier, collating the, the documents, and putting them together for your, for your packets. Not anything in preparation to do before that, and then the cost of the paper and the printing itself. So if you take the twenty-four meetings a year that we, that we utilize, times two hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, you know, that's six thousand dollars per year. We're looking at devices that would kind of be a convertible type device between a tablet and a P laptop PC. Um, we looked at, uh, the Lenovo Yoga Pros and Microsoft Surface. Um, the more cost-effective device would be the Yoga Pro Three. Uh, it has a little larger screen size and just as much computing power as the Microsoft Surface. I think with, uh, a couple of years of use out of those devices before they're replaced, they're going to be, at worst, a cost-neutral, uh, investment for the city council to utilize. Um, at best, they're going to be saving us some money over time, uh, just in saving in the printing costs. So along with that, we'd also want to implement some, um, software with, with those devices. Probably more likely, uh, outlook, uh, on each device, having the council members have a dedicated email address so that they can get back their city, city business through these devices. Uh, in the long-term future, they would stay with the position, so as, you know, if council members decided not to run again, the device would stay with the city and it would go to the newly-elected official. So that there would be some institutional memory that could be, could be sustained with those, uh, emails and the documents saved on that device. So, uh, we're looking at approving a sales quote from, uh, Business Machines Plus. We did look at comparing quotes with the, uh, cooperative purchasing agreement through the, uh, NJPA contract that we're a part of, and the cost is, is the same for this device. It is cheaper with other devices, but in the end, um, I think for what we're trying to accomplish is implementing this, uh, shift in delivering council packages, um, this, this device suits our needs the best.
Thank you. What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Mayor Zelka to approve. And word to bid to Business Machines Plus. Any discussion?
Uh, question I have, if we purchase these and they're revenue-neutral in two years, how much better would it be if you just sent the packets out electronically? I mean, I, personally, I know, I understand everybody's got in the same position. I don't need another electronic device, and with the price we have here, to include a doc, it just...
The doc...
It seems like a unnecessary point to me. I, but I agree with a dedicated, uh, email, if we can make that work, under that domain name with an existing device, but we're looking at, uh, eleven hundred dollars per for all the equipment and software. I, I simply don't need it. I mean, I think we can get these out electronically without printing every packet, and that's a great direction to go. If we need something for the golf course manager, then let's look into that. And we talked about one on each side for the staff, but you have a laptop, I would imagine you have something somewhere, I don't see it here.
Actually, and utilizing that, that one, you don't have any other portable device.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm all for getting you something so you can do your duties, but I intend on voting against this. I, part of it smells like, uh, uh, an extra benefit to the position that I, I don't need.
I think, though, uh, this way you have your device here instead of the paper in front of you. I'm not sure everyone here has a laptop or a different device they can use, but we all need to be on the same page with this. And if they're going to receive it at home and print it off at their own expense in time too, that's, that's not really helping issue.
Yeah, we want a little uniformity too with the device, uh, to ensure that we can deliver the same, make sure we're delivering the same product. I know, um, if you're crossing over between Apple or PC items, sometimes there, there can be some, you know, information that's lost in the conversion, uh, being able to read PDFs or being able to deliver the same kind of mechanism. Um, you know, we, we are looking at also implementing a shared calendar with this so that the council could have a, you know, all look at the shared calendar, and having, um, outlook would be a necessary tool to, to doing that. Um, it would be through the city's exchange server that we have, um, and utilizing the office software to kind of implement that as well as the email addresses. And then, uh, another item of benefit would be with presenting, uh, you know, the same things that we do on the projector, you would have the device in front of you, and we'd be able to share the same screen amongst everybody on the council so that you don't have to, you know, turn your heads or look at the projector, and sometimes the resolution of the, of the things that we're presenting on, on the projector doesn't, kind of, is, is hard to read for, for the people that are making those decisions. So, you know, we want to ensure that everybody would have the, you know, the same devices in common too.
I work in a school system, and a lot of times I get emails and I get attachments that I cannot read because my device will not pick them up, so uniformity is a big issue here. So each device would have to be the same, and if we're all coming in with Macs or PCs that are different, sometimes you're not going to get the information at all. So, I will be voting for this.
Mr. President, um, I would add, I know that the county and the school district both have gone to this. Um, gosh, I think the county did it maybe five years ago, maybe less, I think it was still when, uh, Tom Lenzel was the commissioner. And I know the school board's done it for a while, probably eight years, maybe ten. And I believe it shows that it's cost-neutral, um, and we could have other ways to do it, but, um, I think it's a good idea.
Well, they can just help us to save our natural resources. I know, I've only been on the council for ten months, and I got a pad stack like this, papers that my wife says, where are you going to move them to now? Because I don't want to throw them away in case I need to go back and look at something for another constituent. So being able to save it onto the computer and just have it there would be a great save.
And our police have other things to do.
Currently, the police are delivering the packets for us. We didn't factor that in as, in, in, of the expense to doing this, but, uh, because they're doing it while they're on, on patrols and doing sending this, but we'd save them from that.
Not to mention the privacy, the data request.
That, you know, that's another... You know, there is a big concern from the, from the league and around the state too with the, the state's data practices law. Um, you know, there's always the risk that if, if it were ever the case and we'd be subpoenas, that your personal devices, if you're doing city business on them, should have become at risk of being subpoenaed and being accessed. So, you know, this would help you to ensure that you could carry out city business on a city, on city property.
Oh, if there was a instance where we're deciding on, per saved liking some property where it has to be in full session, um, at least this way you can monitor what goes out and that can't be tapped in by anyone else also versus if it was more on an open, open email, so that could be another issue.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I got a motion by Councilman Gushak and a second by Mayor Zelka. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. On the whole business, mayor's veto, resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-five, established water, wastewater, stormwater, garbage, and recycling rates. Considered?
Um, yeah, as we discussed at the last meeting, which was our budget meeting, uh, we were looking at two different kind of rate structures potentially for, um, uh, changing our sewer rates, which is what the, the mayor's indicated that was a part of his, his veto, that he wanted to discuss the sewer or wastewater rates, um, more in depth. Um, in the end, we bring back the whole res, the resolution as a whole as it was passed at the meeting, um, to kind of follow the procedures of this veto. So, you know, the whole resolution could potentially be up for discussion, but we just wanted to specifically focus on the, on the wastewater side, which was the mayor, of the mayor's concern. Um, currently, our sewer base charge is five dollars and thirty-five percent per month, per unit meter, and, but except for in the units that are apartments. Um, apartments actually, there's about eighty-seven of them that we've, uh, that get a sewer charge, and that doesn't, that's just for the complex itself, that doesn't include each of the individual units. Individual units are not given an individual sewer charge as they would be if on the water side, as they currently are on the water side. So we'd be looking at also implementing, changing the apartment so that each unit of the apartment would be given a sewer-based charge. And the amount that we would need in, in, by next year to pay for the debt service and the capital improvements as they're, as they're presented in the plan, would be a fifteen dollar per month, per unit charge on the sewer rate to cover all of those costs so that we wouldn't otherwise be subsidizing from the sewer wastewater improvement fund balance, which we have been over the past few years. Currently, that balance is about one point one million dollars. If we make no changes whatsoever, if we don't change the apartments, if we don't change the rates, then that balance would be used up within, by about year, in two years. We'd be down to about thirty thousand dollars and, and after twenty seventeen left in that balance. So we would then be at shortfall to be paying our existing debt service that we still have, but in three years would be about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we don't pay that, if we don't have the revenue to pay that in wastewater, then the funds would have to come from the general fund in order to meet that debt obligation. So if we don't do something about raising the sewer rates, it's going to end up coming from the property taxes. So what we proposed originally was a seven dollar and fifty cent increase in year one, a ten dollar increase in year two, twelve fifty in year three, and then fifteen, uh, dollars in year four. We do subsid, we do use, uh, we do draw down the improvement fund balance in the first couple of years, but by year threes and fours, they're, it's scaling back up, and it would be building back up to the point where in year twenty twenty-four, we take off all existing debt service, but by year twenty twenty-two, we're looking at making a large improvement to the sewer plant. So as presented in the work session, you know, we had a few different, uh, calculations of, of what this would look like in terms of drawing down that improvement fund balance, or what it would look like in terms of the rate structure if we went to different scaled rates, or if we went to straight up to fifteen dollars, which was eventually approved at the, at the last meeting. Um, also, we focused on what the potential costs might be, um, for the sewer plant. Uh, right now, we're thinking it's eleven million dollars, but we'll know more a little bit, uh, early, in early twenty sixteen, of what that really could be, uh, for potential costs, because we have some facility, uh, plans that are, that are pending, and it will be due by that time. Um, but that said, things could change, uh, depending on what the regulatory agencies, uh, change in terms of the rules, and those costs could be driven off substantially, or maybe not, not nearly as much. So, you know, seven years from now is a long time to really consider, uh, what these rate increases are going to be. But that said, we need the money now because we're currently, you know, not raising enough revenue in the wastewater fund as an enterprise fund to pay for its existing obligations. We're subsidizing with money that we currently have for improvement fund projects in the past. So we do want to be conscious of what it is it takes in the long term, but we really do need to focus on what we need right now. Um, so there is, there is a, a need for a rate increase. Um, in the past, it has been going up five percent on both the usage charge and the base charge. The usage charge has been, uh, earning us enough revenue to pay for the operating expense, and even the surplus of that money then goes to help for the, you know, debt service obligation capital improvements that we have. However, it's still not enough, and, uh, at the current pace. So what we would likely do in the future is ease that usage increase and not increase that as, at the five percent rate that we have, um, but likely at something smaller because it is meeting the, the revenue that we need. However, we would look at raising the base charge, and we would need to do that at some pretty substantial rates in terms of the percentage amount. In terms of the overall dollar per month, um, if we go from five thirty-five to fifteen dollars, you know, that's nine dollars and sixty-five cents per month. Yes, that doesn't seem like a whole lot, but it is a, you know, percentage-wise, a large increase to our, to our residents. So we just, I know the mayor was very concerned about making sure that we discuss this, this topic fully. Um, I think a strategy that tapers the rates up would be, you know, very reasonable, justifiable, and we, we would be meeting our obligations. Um, the, the calculations that, that we show and the needs that we need in the, in the near term, um, we do need, and, and long term, is we do need to be at fifteen dollars per month per unit, uh, on a wastewater-based charge to pay those obligations, so.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Um, it's okay to speak on this, that resolution that's out here then, for council?
I think you make a motion. Or do we need a motion for this?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not certain how the, how the veto term works, if it's like a table to item, if it could just be brought back off the table with a motion, or if somebody does need to make a motion to, to approve for discussion.
I know we're required to vote on it, so it's got to be on the table if we also...
It says, uh, your, your ordinance two oh five says that upon return of any ordinance or resolution by the mayor, the vote by which it was passed shall be deemed to be reconsidered, and the question shall again be put before the council. So it's deemed to be reconsidered, so basically the, the, the question is being put before you again whether or not you're going to adopt it or they'll adopt it.
So it's on the table?
So it's on the table.
So it's on the table, a motion on twenty fifteen ninety-five.
Okay, Mr. President, um, a couple of my reasons for vetoing, and first of all, I said this in the work session, and I want to reiterate it. This is not a judgment of the knowledge of my constituents. I enjoy working with everybody on this council, I think we work well together and kind of common balance and collaborate well together. So please, uh, you know, I might look a little odd at seven one vote, and then the mayor vetoes it and bring it back. Um, I was just hoping that we'd have all the discussion that we've had this evening, I'm happy with the amount of discussion we have. Um, I would just reiterate, um, the reasons for vetoing. Um, one of them was a fifteen dollar increase, or fifteen dollars a month, not increase, could be almost triple the two thousand fifteen base rate. Uh, the fifteen dollars a month would be, um, double the seven fifty proposed resolution that we had discussed earlier, and also an increase of almost ten dollars per month, or a hundred and twenty dollars annually for all residents and community would be a concern to me. So a hundred and twenty dollars annually. So those were my reasons, I heard... I heard, uh, plenty of discussion. Uh, once again, John did a great job of presenting and I appreciate all the facts and numbers that we have. Um, and I too am very concerned about it, but I also think that we can minimize the impact a little bit, um, in whether we go with the ten, twelve fifty or, and then fifty and keep it there, uh, whatever the council would wish, but, uh, once again, I will be voting the same way. So, yeah.
I'd like to commend the mayor for taking a stand on this and bringing it back. It gave everyone a little bit more insight, I think. But, uh, for years, we've been trying to raise this up in the past and personally, I've always wanted to increase more in the past so it wouldn't have to be so drastic in the future. And I'd like to see this happen again. Uh, it's gonna pay a little more now so we don't have to levy later on. And, uh, on your recommendation, you said a fifteen percent would put us in a pretty good, I mean, a fifteen dollar would put us in a pretty good place, and we do have to face our big expenditure that's expected to come up here, which may be eleven, it may be a whole lot more, which, uh, I wanna be prepared at that time and not have the community take a big hit and a levy at the same time. So, I'm gonna be voting in favor again on them, for them reasons, and, uh, again, I'd like to commend the mayor for bringing this up again.
Just to clarify, John.
Go ahead.
We can get to pretty much the same spot, but just a little bit slower if we went with the ten dollar.
Yes.
You have the ten, ten, twelve fifty.
Yeah, we did.
I mean, we're still, we, we probably still won't end up in a, in a real bad shortfall. I mean, because according to the diagram here, we should be able to get up to the point where we, we need to be. It's just gonna take us slightly longer to get there.
Yeah, it, in the, in the run that's showing ten dollars and twelve fifty, you know, we, we are, we're drawing down the current one point one million dollar fund balance by about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in years one, um, then it drops down to only another hundred and seventy, but then we're flatlining when we get back to sixty. So, if we did nothing with the rate, we're losing a half a million dollars every year and we're spending it down. So, instead of, you know, losing a half a million dollars, this one would only be losing one seventy the first two years and then by year three, we'd be where we need to be to start building that fund balance back up so that we'd be prepared as the existing debt service falls off that we could take on the new debt service and that we're, you know, if it's the eleven million dollars, our hope, our best-case scenario is, is that the red, that rate, that fifteen dollars is substantial enough to pay for that, that new debt service. You know, if it's more, then, you know, we're, we're in a position where we have to look at increasing it, so.
But we'd still have a sufficient balance.
We'd have a sufficient balance to be able to maybe ease into, ease into, uh, what we need at that time, so.
Mr. President, I would just add to, uh, that fifty percent is the only part of the resolution that.
The fifteen dollar.
Our fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars. Yeah, I wanna be very clear, it is not a fifteen percent increase, it's much more than that. It is five fifteen to, five thirty-five to fifteen dollars is what is approved in the resolution.
Thank you.
And the, the thing is, is that it's true, we're gonna be need to get fifteen sooner or later, so do we do it this year or we do it?
I, I don't see anything that, that would show me that we don't, we don't, we can't be at fifteen to, to operate the, the wastewater fund, um, in the block. I mean, otherwise, it's going, we're either going to subsidize out of the improvement fund balance, which eventually will be drawn down completely if we don't utilize something. And then at that point, you're obligated to make the difference up in property taxes because it's, you know, you have to pay for the existing debt that you have from property taxes if you can't pay it from the enterprise, enterprise fund that it's in.
Question, uh, Warren isn't here today, where does his vote stand?
Um, no vote, does it know?
You, you need six. I mean, that, that said, you need six aldermen, six council members to vote, so if any one of you, you know, save it except for the mayor votes no, it fails.
So, if we vote no on this and this resolution fails, then we have to?
Then you could bring back another resolution. You would need a res- you need to pass some resolution, otherwise it would stay where they are.
We could still do that tonight though, right?
Yes, yes. You could fail it, bring it back with the recommended change, um, but we would, staff would highly recommend that a resolution be passed then so that we could have it in the budget for next year. If we do change it, then we would also need to do a resolution to change the overall, the, the budget number, the revenue number in the, um, revenue and expense number in the waste, wastewater enterprise fund too.
I would like to see us take a little more measured approach to the increase. We maybe need to go more than seven fifty, but I'd be more in favor of ten. And taking a good look at it next year, we have some better numbers from our engineering firm. See if they say it's gonna be closer to one and starts to prepare us.
The thing, the thing is, love a million, it's gonna require the fifteen, we know that, it's sustained.
If we appliance to get there, this is just, we can do it a little more slowly.
Any further discussion? So, there's motion on table?
Can we read the motion so we're all in same understanding here?
Approve Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-five as presented.
As presented at.
Fifteen dollars.
Down.
Call roll.
Hercock?
No.
Wiltjergren?
No.
Zilka?
No.
Hancler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Knopla?
No.
Motion fails.
So, do you, a motion for Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-five for ninety-five A or what do we wanna?
Let's do ninety-five A.
All right, I'll make a motion for Resolution twenty fifteen ninety-five A, um, to go with the, uh, ten dollar a month for two thousand sixteen, twelve fifty, and then fifteen by the year two thousand eighteen.
Page seven?
Uh, page seven.
Well, we just for the twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, right?
Just for the ten dollars. So. We, we with the.
With the intent.
Thirteen ten, but this is only for one.
So, yeah, motion by Councilman Knopla, I have a second?
Yes.
And a second by Alderman Hercock to approve Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-five A with the wastewater base rate of ten dollars a month. Any further discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll?
Wiltjergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hancler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushak?
No.
Knopla?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Any need of resolution to adjust, uh, rates also, John?
Yeah, that would be twenty fifteen dash one oh five would be the next resolution number and unfortunately, we don't have what that, what that actual number would be, um, but either way, we balance, we'd be balancing the revenue expense stream from the, from the wastewater and subsidizing any excess, uh, or any deficit with the improvement fund balance.
So, we want that under new business under F F?
Yes.
Twenty fifteen one oh five?
That way we, that way we have a clear budget, um, moving forward into twenty sixteen without having an amendment right away in the first, very first amendment.
Adjust revenue for stormwater or wastewater? Other old business, permanent display request, Memorial Park, Tony?
I, I don't know much to add from, from the, the letter other than to reiterate that this was discussed with your litigation attorney, Paul Reivers, um, his recommendation or, or his advice rather, is that the council does not, the city does not have to allow this, um, because the city does not have to allow it. Obviously, my recommendation is then that you don't allow it. Again, for similar reasons as the temporary display that in the future, you're gonna have trouble controlling that, then once you open that door, you're gonna have trouble controlling what's put there. Um, under all of the new Supreme Court decisions, um, I just think it's, it's a slip by slope and if we are not required to do it, my recommendation is that you don't.
Okay, quick motion to council?
Make a motion that we don't allow permanent display request from Memorial Park.
Got a motion by Councilman Bushak, second by Councilman Wiltjergren to deny the request?
Deny it. Deny it.
Wasn't it pulled from our agenda?
No.
That was, that's a different.
My name.
Okay. This is old business B, this was a written request for a permanent display of Memorial Park permission.
Ninety-eight is the one that got pulled, that was a temporary seasonal display.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, a motion by Councilman Bushak and a second by Councilman Wiltjergren to deny the request? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-nine, fee schedule two thousand sixteen, adopt, John?
Yeah, we have one, I have one note in here, um, of a correction item, uh, it's on the, that's number, it's supposed to be three, four, six. Page six, in the media transfer, uh, it says plus twenty-five dollars per hour with a quarter hour minimum of five twenty-five, uh, just on calculation basis, it should be six twenty-five, so. Because if you take one quarter of twenty-five dollars, it would equal six twenty-five, so I just wanted to make sure that that's listed correctly. Staff reviewed a lot of these, um, fee schedules, uh, just making some modest changes in, in some places. And one specifically I wanted to note was that we're going to increase, um, our community society license, um, so that we could increase for, I, uh, dogs, spater, neuter, in cats. Hopefully, that would be a indicator to people to, with those animals addressed, help maintain the street pet population.
Quick motion to the council on Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-nine.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilman Hanson to approve Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-nine, fee schedule, one to one amendment. Any discussion? Golf course, bring a look at that, see if it gets closer again?
Yeah.
No other discussion, resolution, call or roll?
Zilka?
Yes.
Hancler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Knopla?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Wiltjergren?
Yes.
Carries. Quick set feasibility report in public public hearings, public improvement three seventy-four, Resolution twenty fifteen dash one hundred, service and utility improvement, Third Street, uh, northeast, Greg?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, uh, today we present to you the feasibility reports for the, uh, four segments that we reviewed. Um, the first one that we're looking at tonight is Third Street Northeast. If you recall, the project location is from Fourth Avenue up to the, uh, to the railroad tracks. We did look at this in two segments, uh, two options. The first one was between fourth and sixth and the remainder, uh, was from sixth up to the, to the railroad tracks. Uh, this is basically an extension of our twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen project. Uh, if you recall, in twenty fourteen, we did Third Street between Third and Fourth Avenue and then in twenty fifteen, we went from Third Avenue down to First Avenue, uh, northeast. This section, uh, has a pacer rating of two, which is considered as very poor. Uh, the water main and the sanitary sewer are both extremely old. The water main is six inch cast iron, which was installed in nineteen hundreds, and the sanitary sewer is a ten inch clay pipe, which was installed in nineteen fifteen. Storm sewer is a little bit better. It's a fifteen inch concrete pipe built in nineteen sixty-nine. We do have a little bit of an issue with, with that pipe. Um, it's the old style of pipe that doesn't have a gasket joint, so there is some leaking between the joints, so you get some sediment, uh, travels into there or you tend to have some, uh, creation of pot holes if it's too close to the surface. So, we, we have had to fix, uh, some of that, that, that area because of that type of a pipe, but overall, structurally, that, that pipe is sound. Looking at the project need, uh, you can see here on the right, uh, this is a Google art image, uh, there's some areas that do not have curb and gutter, areas that do have curb and gutter, but then you've got a lot of areas that have quite a few potholes where the pavement's broken up, um, and came those where we've had to, have to patch it. So, that would necessitate the pacer rating of two, uh, indicating the pavement condition. Looking at the, the underground, uh, I've got a couple of pictures here of the sanitary sewer. This first one here, you'll notice this is, uh, essentially a, a root ball in the sewer. Uh, that's where the triggerets get in between the, the joints of the clay pipe and begin to clog, uh, the sewer, the flow of sewage down through there. The right picture here, uh, this is one bell end of a pipe, this is the other end. Right here, you can see the actual soil above it, um, because there's no pipe holding it back, back, the actual pipe is broken, um, just from tendency of clay pipe, if it gets cracked, it does, uh, it does break. Another piece of broken pipe, you can see the, the bell end here, this is the spigot that goes into it and you see a chunk that's broken up. We do get INI infiltration where water, uh, does flow in through those, those areas, which we're gonna want to, uh, avoid. Looking at, uh, some other ones, you know, you've got hairline roots coming in the, uh, sewer services from the residential side. You see another root ball coming in through there, um, and then you've got a, a hairline crack off to the side here with the pipe in that one. That one actually goes all the way around the pipe, so for whatever reason, whether the ground moved or what, but there's a, a crack all the way around that, uh, that pipe. Again, looking at some other, other pictures, more roots intrusion into the, into the sewer. This is actually a capped pipe, uh, service, but you'll notice there's roots coming in, uh, off to the side there as, as well. So, the proposed improvements that we'd be looking at for this stretch on Third Street, uh, would be a sixteen, fifteen inch sanitary sewer. Uh, we would assess those properties at an eight inch, uh, just because we are oversizing it to account for some additional flow, uh, from a lift station some way. The sewer services would be stubbed out to the property line, so we'd make sure that we don't get any additional inflow, uh, between the right of the line and our, and our main. We would reconstruct the, the water main. Again, that will be assessed at a six inch size because that's what would be needed for, uh, the properties, but it aided provides additional fire flow protection as well as additional flow to the, the neighboring, uh, residential areas. Water services will be stubbed out to the property line and then in this area, we'd install a twenty-four inch raw water line to get down to our, uh, future aquifer. And the, the twenty-four inch will be at a, at a city's cost. As I mentioned, we've looked at two options. The first option was from fourth to sixth avenue, uh, we'd be looking at a thirty-six inch curb and section, so we'd put curb and gutter on both sides of the road. Uh, we'd have five inches of aggregate base with three and a half inches of battunus at a council board, essentially a seven ton road in that, in that area. Between Sixth Avenue and the railroad tracks, we would narrow that down to a thirty-two foot wide road. In that stretch, all of the properties have sufficient parking, um, off streets, we wouldn't need to go to a wider, wider street. Uh, we'd have a five inch aggregate base, three and a half, three and a half inches of battunus, um, and then option two takes in, will come also option number one, so they're kind of adequate there. In the feasibility report, you'll notice option number two is the recommended option, uh, where we do all of the project up to the railroad tracks. The first two blocks would be at thirty-six feet and the last block would be at thirty, or excuse me, first two blocks would be at thirty-six and that northern block would be at, at thirty-two feet. So, looking at the opinion of probable cost, uh, option number one, we have construction at six hundred and thirty-four thousand eighty dollars with contingencies and engineering. The total comes in at seven hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars for that two-block stretch. Option number two, again, taking into account the first two blocks of, of option one there, we're looking at construction of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, uh, with contingency and engineering, we're looking at nine hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for, uh, that stretch of the project. Comparing the project funding, um, option number one, you'll see we have twenty-two point five percent assessed, which is, equates to a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. We extended to that third block, uh, we're looking at twenty-five point eight percent assessed, which equates to two hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, with the city picking up the, the remainder of the, of the project. Looking at the assessment rates, uh, these are similar, or these are the rates that you recently passed in your previous motions, although it's, uh, you can see the difference in the thirty-two foot and the thirty-six inch foot, uh, the residents as well as the city do see a reduction in, uh, rates to go to that reduced curb and section, so they do see a cost savings, um, but the other rates are off the range. But the other rates are off the range here, and those pretty much stayed very similar to what we saw last year as well. So looking at Project Three Seventy-four, we do intend to sell general obligation bonds, the city approves this segment. It could be combined with other segments, and the property owners who are disabled and need income by then are sixty-five years or older. They're probably for it just like the rest of them. Looking at the next steps, tonight we're just asking for approval to accept the feasibility report and call for a public hearing. So this by no means indicates you're going to do that portion, or do that project. We're just asking the residents to come in, give their hero rap, say about the project, and give their opinion whether or not they're for it or against it. So we look to have a public hearing on January nineteenth. If that is approved, we'd be looking at design in the January and February timeframe. We'd be looking at advertising for bids in February, and we open bids March fifteenth. With construction happening in the spring and summer of twenty sixteen, and then the special assessment hearing and remainder of the project, you know, in terms of term establishment and such, we leave it in the fall of twenty sixteen. So tonight, we'd be looking at, and this goes for all of them, calling for the public hearing so that we can bring the property owners in to see what their perspective is on the assessments as well as the proposed improvements. Any questions?
Your twenty-four inch offer, that's something for in the future, we're looking at, perhaps this whole road from the south of that, has that been done?
Everything from Second Avenue up to Fourth has been, has twenty-four inch line there, correct?
So if you put in a road and have to add a twenty-four inch aquifer later, it'd be a big expense to rip that road up.
That is correct, yeah.
So now, time to do it, get them done. Preparing for the future here.
Greg, for all those steps that you've proposed, what is the cost to the city outside of staff time?
For the public hearing, we do have publication costs, so we will have to send out a notice to all of the residents indicating what their preliminary assessment amount will be. That number can obviously fluctuate up or down, but we have to prepare those documents to send out to them, as well as publications in the record. So really, those are the main costs for the public hearing. Once we get into the design, that's where you get a little bit more labor intensive. We don't have any external costs, but we have staff time to draw up the plans, as well as specs for them. So I would say your public hearing's going to be minimal. I don't have the cost right off the top of my head for publication, but I'd say even less than five hundred bucks, you're probably looking after that.
Thank you.
Thank you for going to the same place I was. We're not going to do four projects, and staff recommended two of the four. Why are we doing public hearings and setting everything up for four, and we throw two of them off the board, you know?
Right.
We ain't got the funds to do it.
I agree. So this was one of?
This was one of the optional steps I recommended.
If we did two?
If we did two of them, yes. Normally, we'd like to target about a million dollars worth of construction annually. With the two that were, that I recommend this evening, this is one of them, and the other one is coming later. We are at one one point two million dollar construction season.
And that'd be a total of three blocks, or?
Four.
Four.
This would be three blocks, and the other one is a one-block stretch.
So realistically, this is one that basically has to be done because it's the only one that's over twenty percent.
There is one other that's over twenty percent.
But not a tally of two, it couldn't combine enough to make our twenty percent bonding.
Right.
How much do we need on the other end for the raw water pipe? Another block and a half, I'm guessing it's under Third Street and Second Avenue, so we're at roughly another block and a half.
Block and a half is what we'd be looking at over there, yes.
Second Street is in great shape, right?
Second Street was recently reconstructed, correct? So that intersection of Second Street and Second Avenue, we would have to put a trench across that portion of it.
Okay.
But Second Avenue has not been reconstructed yet.
How far off in the future is your plans for that end? I mean, when are we going to start entertaining what we need to do as far as wells and?
We'll have to see how the wells out here, how they perform. You know, last year, we had that issue with the bacteria and stuff down in the wells. We're going to try to do some rehabs, and if those come back acceptable and promising, then it's probably going to be out farther. But it's going to depend on the production of what our wells can do out here. Originally, we were looking between five and ten years. I'm optimistic that we might be able to get farther than that out, which would be good, because then that's not an expense that we have to go right up for. Thank you.
Mr. President, I guess my point was with that four blocks, it doesn't sound like we're being extremely extravagant to try to do a catch-up. And as we looked at the overall city with some of the work that we're going to need done in the next few years, I just would hate to see us paying ourselves into the water plant, water treatment, plant corner again.
Another thing I'll add on that twenty-four inch, in the event that we have to tap into that new aquifer, that block and a half wouldn't take us too long to install. But if we're looking at a block and a half there, plus, you know, three or four blocks up here, that's going to take us some time to get all of that installed. So we want to get everything in place as best as we can, so that we're not behind a fall waiting for something, so that we can utilize that land.
All right.
Council President, when earlier in the work session, the question was asked, how much of our debt service we're paying off each year? So during the break, I ran and grabbed the audit, and when I back out the debt, or the debt service that is paid by tax increment, our debt service, that special assessment paid, is just under one point nine million.
Thank you.
So getting a motion on Resolution twenty fifteen dash one hundred? So.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilman Hanson for Resolution twenty fifteen dash one hundred. Any further discussion? Hearing none, resolution call a roll.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
William, oh, excuse me, Hurcock?
Yes.
Loegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash one oh one, Third Avenue Northeast?
This evening, we've got a front of you feasibility report for Third Avenue Northeast. If you recall, last year, we did review this segment as well. This is essentially an extension, again, of our Third Street project. Third Street, in twenty fourteen, we had block three, fourth. Last year, we had a two-block south of that. We reviewed this chunk. Last year, it got up to the public hearing stages before we were ready to actually prepare plans and specs. Looking at the budgets, we weren't able to afford this particular project, so it was voted down. This evening, I'll go over the feasibility report as well. But again, looking at the budget, this is probably one of those that I would recommend not doing this year, just because of funding. But looking at the project, it's the one-block stretch between Third Street and Fourth Street. There is sanitary sewer along about three-quarters of the block. There is a private water line on this stretch that serves these four homes on the north side of the property, the north side of the corridor. We'd be looking at replacing that stretch with curb and gutter in an urban section. And you'll notice this would be proposed to be a thirty-two-foot wide stretch. The pacer rating or the payment condition for that stretch is a pacer of three, which is in poor condition. There is, like I mentioned, there is no water main, it's a private service line that was installed in nineteen thirty-eight. We haven't seen any issues with it, but it is a private line, so if there are issues, property owners will be responsible for that section of it. The eight-inch sanitary sewer was installed in nineteen thirty-nine. There's multiple hairline cracks inside. We do see some infiltration in there, but structurally, it seems to be holding up thus far. So looking at the road, you can see there is cracks. The curb is chipped up, not necessarily uniform, but in height by any means. So it is a good candidate for reconstruction, but again, looking at the overall budget, it's probably something we could probably forego. And here, you can see this has got the hairline crack at the ridge, as well as at the inver. We have some roots coming in through the services. So looking at the proposed improvements, we'd be looking at thirty-two feet wide. The reason we're looking at going with that, all the properties along there have adequate off-street parking, adequate garages. They'll use the street board for parking, and so we'd be looking at narrowing that road up, reducing the speed in through there. We would continue to have the sidewalk on the north side of the avenue. We would reconstruct the sanitary sewer with new water main and services to the property, and then restore the boulevards in time. So looking at the project costs, we estimate construction to come in at a hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars. When you add in contingency and engineering, the project is estimated at a hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. At the funding level, roughly thirty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars would be assessed, which equates to about seventeen point eight percent. The city would be picking up the remainder of that project. The assessments are listed on the right, similar or consistent with the twenty sixteen assessment rates that we just recently passed. Again, the city will tend to sell obligation bonds for the project, and if this is approved, it would be combined into one overall project down the line. So the next step, if this is approved, we'd be sending out notices for a public hearing on the nineteenth of January. Design in January, February. Advertisement for bids in February, with construction being in spring and summer of twenty sixteen. Any questions on this segment? This was not one of the segments that was, this is not one of the segments that we would recommend moving forward. We do have another segment, which would be Fourth Street Northwest, that would be more of a priority, just because of the water main breaks. After we consider the budgets and kind of what we're looking at in terms of bonding overall.
I just have one question.
Yep.
If these lines break, the property owners have to repair it, why on the west side did we pay for it? It was a private line.
At the time, we didn't know where the water was coming from, so we had to dig down and find where all work was at. At that point, when you've got it exposed, you just might as well fix it and get it taken care of.
What's the resolution by Council on Resolution twenty fifteen dash one oh one?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty fifteen dash one oh one.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Gushak for approval of Resolution twenty fifteen dash one oh one. Further discussion?
Yeah, just a question. Would it be fair to categorize this maybe instead of private, as in installed by other than the city? Are they metered services?
They are metered services, yes.
So in the event of something happening, would it be fair to say they're, do a city service just like any other residence?
Their meter is inside their house, so if the water is leaking in the street, there's no way to quantify how much that is leaking, even though it's on a private line. So there's one line that comes out, and then it splits to the individual homes. So if it's under the street and it breaks, we can't quantify how much water is leaking out of there, even though it is a private line at that point.
All I'm saying is, I mean, at that point, then do we have to dig up the street and put in a water line? I don't think at that point, it's right to say, well, it's a private line, so you're on your own. I mean, wouldn't we just take it as a project on at that time and put the city service in?
Even at that point, we would have to go through the four twenty-nine process, which generally from beginning to end takes about six months. So if it breaks, we would have to notify, technically, we would have to notify the property owners that there's a break. They would be responsible for fixing it, and then we would probably go through this four twenty-nine process again with feasibility report and such, in order to get a city water line in through there.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Greg, what would happen, say that they didn't fix it and they're asking for water, would we put a temporary service in? Or we just tell them, too bad, so sad, you need to find your own water?
We'd probably put in a temporary service. I mean, it's kind of tough to tell someone, no, we're not going to, not, we're not going to provide you water.
Right.
We want to get these areas taken care of, so we don't have to cross that bridge.
Right. We don't want to be putting that predicament.
Exactly.
Is this one we're giving up every July, or?
Nope, this is the Fourth Street one, that's the one I want to take care of.
You said this one hadn't had any leaks, Greg?
This one has not had a leak yet.
We heard that.
To make it clear, you know, we had to vote to approve, not voting for it, to tell you ahead of time, but yeah, put the motion on the table, so.
And the total amount due to the city, what was that, one seventy-one?
The city's component of it would be a hundred and forty thousand eight hundred manual dollars.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution call a roll.
Hanson?
No.
Gushik?
No.
Canopla?
No.
Hurcock?
No.
Loegren?
No.
Zilka?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Miles?
Resolution twenty fifteen dash one oh two, servicing utility improvements, Fourth Avenue Northeast. Greg?
The feasibility report for Fourth Avenue Northeast is in front of you guys. The section that we're looking at, that we reviewed, is between Ninth and Eleventh Street. If you look to the right, bottom right, you'll see courtesy of Googler, is Covert's parking lot. Just up south that, you've got Walgreens and then Broadway down in the far south. This stretch is a pacer rating of four, so a little bit step above the previous projects here. It does need some structural improvement, and we'll talk about that in a little bit here. The water main was installed in nineteen eighty-nine, we don't have any issues with that. Sanitary sewer was installed in nineteen seventy-six, that's in decent condition. The storm sewer was installed in nineteen sixty-nine, and that's where we're starting to see the issues with the storm sewer, as well as the pavement itself. The storm sewer was, is a twenty-one inch concrete pipe. We're not seeing issues with the structural integrity of it. But what we're seeing is that that type of pipe, when they installed it, again, it didn't have the gasket in the joint. So water is starting to get in between those joints, bringing in soil, so you start to see puddles in that area, as well as the type of soils that they encountered during construction. If you look on the left-hand side, you can see a long crack all the way down the south side of the road. That's where the storm sewer is located at. The soil that they have underneath this stretch, and you can see based on this running up here and breaking up, is more of a silty clay. When that is susceptible to frost, frost heaves, it's actually starting to push up the storm sewer on the south side. So when that comes up, our plows are not able to adequately clear the snow in this area. It doesn't always go back down, and so the water gets trapped here. It finds its way into the pavement, makes it soft, and then you start getting that pavement to break up. So in here, we wanted to look at what options we could to alleviate this problem. You look at the curb, it's not in bad shape, but again, it's on the same type of soils the rest of the corridor is on. We looked at three options. The first option, put back exactly what we have there in terms of the width, thirty-six feet wide. Put new curb and gutter on the north side and the south side. We put drain tile on both sides to get the water from underneath the pavement. Second option is narrow the road up a little bit. You'll notice here, we only have the one car parked on there. Everybody else seems to be, you know, they've got plenty of off-street parking there in their garage. So we thought, you know, thirty-two might be a good option to review there. Again, we put new curb and gutter north and south, put drain tile in there to get the water out from underneath the subgrade, so we don't break up the pavement. So that would be the second option that we reviewed. Third option that we reviewed is thirty-six-foot wide street, only replacing the curb and gutter on the south side. Because in the picture there, and as you can see on sight, the curb is in relatively decent shape, but the storm sewer is on the south side. So regardless, this curb is going to get removed when during the construction of it. That would allow us to install drain tile on the south, as well as some leads across to try to get some of that water out from underneath the subgrade. So looking at those three options, you know, kind of as I mentioned, thirty-six foot wide, seven ton. We would include a subcut on all of the options to make that pavement section a little bit better. Option number two went down to the thirty-two foot wide, and option number three just had the curb on the south side of the road with thirty-six foot wide street. Just kind of a typical section there. Just kind of a typical section there. The recommended option is actually option number two. Um, that comes in for construction at $375,092. When you add contingency and engineering, we're at $445,690. Uh, it's not quite as expensive as option number one, as, it's a little bit more expensive than option number two, or option number three. The drawback that we saw with option number three is that, that north curb would still be on that existing soil. And so you have the potential with the pavement being stable and all the water removed, you still have that silty sand on the north side that, that is susceptible to, to moving. You could potentially get a curb that comes up like this, and now when you, when you plow it, chews up the edge there, you don't get water to get up, get into the curb, into the gutter line. So we saw that there could potentially be some issues with option number three, that's why that one was not, was not chosen. Looking at the funding for, for this project, uh, the city would pick up about 86%, which equates to $354,398. The remainder, which are assessments, uh, at $91,211. The project costs or the assessment rates, you can see for a 32-foot wide urban section would be at $38, 36-foot wide would be at 42, and the side footages are essentially half of the, of the front foot. Storm sewer is at 15 cents per square foot, consistent with our 2016 assessment rates. You'll notice down at the bottom here, storm sewer has a design life of 50 years, and so some of those properties have it prorated to 94% of the, uh, assessment cost, and the design life for a street is 30 years. So those properties would be assessed at 80% of the, of the assessment rate. So the next step, um, tonight, we'd be asking for the council to do the, to call for the public hearing, basically send out the notices to the property owners, have them come in, speak their piece on whether or not they're in favor or against the, the project. We'd be looking at that for January 19. Uh, after that, we can move forward onto the design. And all of these actually have to have council authorization, so the, each step has, uh, has more work to, to go forward with. Any questions on the Fourth Avenue?
Mr. President, is this one of the two recommended?
This is not one of the two. Um, just because of the cost, it, you know, kinds of put, it puts us over our, our targeted range in terms of construction projects that we want to bond for. And so we'd be looking at not doing this, this project next year and, you know, pushing it out a couple of years until we can, uh, get funding for, for that project. So the next one is what we'd be, Fourth Street's what we'll be looking at, uh, recommending tonight to move forward with.
Greg, one other question on this project. That's not the block that's had trouble with the flooding in the basements? That's part of the, is that the one?
That's the, that's the, it's a two-block stretch, but yes, that's the one there. So, I mean, we are looking at it. We'll check what it is there.
Do any of these plans take care of flooding in the basement?
No. And the, the area that they're having issues is the, their backyards. Um, there's a two-block stretch, I'll bring up that here, where normally you have, um, you know, you have a mid-block street, you have 10th Street coming in through there. We don't have that. So all of this back here, it drains to, you know, the common swale, and then comes all the way down and then out. Um, there is a, a stub, it's a private storm sewer that comes out to a, a catch basin. Um, we don't, we don't own it, we don't maintain it. So it, it's kind of the property owner's responsibility to make sure that grade is cleaned of leaves, cleaned of grass clippings, um, to make sure that it doesn't flood in the, in the backyard.
What's the motion, the council, on Resolution 2015-102? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-102.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Knopfler. Resolution 2015-102, further discussion? Hearing none, Resolution call a roll.
Gushak?
No.
Knopfler?
No.
Hurcock?
No.
Wildegrin?
No.
Zilka?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Vales.
Resolution 2015-103, Service and Utility Improvements, Fourth Street Northwest. Correct?
Fourth Street Northwest, this is one of the two that, uh, I'm asking to, to move forward, is recommended to move forward. Um, it's a one-block stretch going north of Broadway. Uh, you'll notice in the north here, we've got very large middle school. Uh, this stretch, we've actually had two water main breaks, two line breaks in the last, uh, two years. Uh, we've got pacer rating of six. It is in good condition, but the issue that we're seeing is that it's actually a private water line that continually breaks about once a year. In 1999, it was installed narrower to, to save the trees, and you'll see on the pictures here shortly. Um, again, there's no water main, it's a private line, you know. Uh, we fixed it the last two times. Uh, we'd have to dig down to see where the water is coming from, and that's why we've already had the hole, but we, we fixed it. Um, we want to move forward and actually get a water main in there that the city owns and maintains so that we don't have to keep having these issues year after year. Uh, there is an eight-inch sanitary sewer that was installed in 1999 as well. Uh, that seems to be in good shape, so we don't have concerns about that, that stretch. This is a July 2014 image. You can see here is where the first, um, break occurred. And then in 2015, you can see right here is where the next break occurred, and there's actually the patch from our 2014, uh, project as well, our 2014 repair. So we do have a history of breaks in that area, on that line. Um, we would be looking at full-depth reconstruction with 36-foot wide street. We're looking at 36 as opposed to 32 because of, uh, the bus traffic that comes back through there for, uh, for the school. We would extend the sanitary sewer services to the rightway. On the plans that we, uh, reviewed, they installed the sanitary sewer main, and it looked like they stubbed out basically a quarter or two worth of sanitary sewer to connect up to the existing pipes. Uh, we're going to plan to extend those pipes out to the rightway line to make sure that they're, uh, watertight and don't have any infiltration issue with them. If they are indeed, uh, the PVC pipe that we would be putting in today, we wouldn't replace them. Uh, but right now, the plans don't, the record drawing don't indicate that's what's, uh, what's up there. We would install a six-inch ductile iron water main, uh, with services to the property. We would stub that out so that in 2018, when the Trump Highway 27 project comes through, we can connect that up and actually loop the water main so it's not a dead end like the current is. Once we're complete with construction, we'd restore the driveways and boulevards as they are today. Cost for the project, construction comes in at $174,597. When you add contingency and engineering, we're looking at $207,422. Assessments come in at 19.2%, so we're looking at $39,760 for the assessments. The total project, again, $207,422. The assessment rates are consistent with our 2016, uh, peace, or, uh, resolution we recently passed. So notice I've got a note on the bottom. Our assessment policy does not guarantee the life of the pavement when your curb and gutter is not installed. So both properties along there, even though it was installed in 1991, we would be looking at, um, the full, uh, full amount for the, for the front and side footage of those because we did not install curb and gutter at the time, and we had a narrower road than what was normally, uh, recommended for. So those assessments are not prorated because of the, of the pavement. So the next steps for this, uh, project or the segments would be public hearing on January 19. Uh, so we send out letters, invite them in, and we get to hear what they have to say. Once we have that on the 19th, the council will then potentially order in the project. If that's the case, we'd have a design in January, February, with the desire to have advocate for bids in, in February, and opening bids March with construction in summer. Any questions?
What's the motion, the council, on Resolution 2015-103?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Alderman Hurcock, to approve Resolution 2015-103. Discussion?
Only qualm I have is destroying a 15-year-old road, but the second has to be done.
It's either we're going to pull it out or we're going to patch it up with mirrors. Seems to be the trend.
From the pictures, it'll look like the private lines underneath the road anyway.
Yep. The one we can find, it's, it's right above here.
Any further discussion? Resolution, call a roll please.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Wildegrin?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2015-104, set feasibility report, call for public hearing for sidewalks. Correct?
This past year, we went around on the west side of town. Uh, we were on a three-year rotation. Uh, last year, or in 2015, we did the east side of town. Uh, 2016, we're looking at the west side, so we did the feasibility report for the west side of town. There were a couple of areas that, um, we noticed on the east side when we were doing our 2015 project that we had, had missed, so those are included in this project as well. As, in, in addition to areas where, um, property owners notified us of, of tripping hazards. So if they see something and they, they tell us that there's a, a lift somewhere, they'll call us up, we'll, uh, take a look at it, and those were included in, in this project. Next year, in 2017, uh, to finish out the three-year cycle, we'll be looking at, uh, the downtown business area in terms of tripping hazards, and then repeat the cycle all over again. So in front of you, you've got the, the feasibility report for the sidewalks. Again, I mentioned most of it's on the west side, as you can see on these, these red dots that was a location where we, uh, have identified tripping hazards, as well as a couple of areas on the east side that, uh, that we became aware of. So I mentioned the three-year rotation, uh, west side's scheduled for 2016. We've identified tripping hazards that are three-eighths of an inch. That may seem pretty small and minute, but that's what ADA requirements are, uh, for tripping hazards, whether it's three-eighths of an inch horizontally or vertically, those are, are considered tripping hazards, and so that's what we've, uh, that's what we've looked at. So the proposed improvements, uh, replacement of the panel, if it's separated, so if it's pulled apart from the, from the next one, we'll be replacing that because obviously you can't fill that, that void in between there, um, other than replacing the entire panel. If that panel is offset more than one inch, we also would be looking at a replacement because once you, on a four-inch concrete, uh, sidewalk, if you grind off an inch, now you only have three and a half inches. It's likely to, to crack there in the future. So anything, anything higher than one inch, we're looking at, uh, total replacement of that panel to get it in compliance with the ADA requirements. And then grinding, if anything, is less than, than one inch to try to save that, that concrete as possible. The opinion of probable cost, construction comes in at $23,425. Engineering's at $5,000. When you add in the contingency, it's, uh, $30,768 for, uh, for the project. Assessments for this, uh, project would be at 77%, so we're looking at $23,589. That is not even 20%. The city's component is $7,179. Our current assessment policy is the city will pay for the sidewalk the first time. If there's any repairs or replacements, those are 100% assessed to the property owners. So the amount that the city is paying for here, uh, is at the, um, the intersections or at alleys where we don't have a property owner necessarily assigned to, to that component of it. So the intersections, if there's a tripping hazard, if they need to have truncated domes, that we identify as a city cost.